All right. November twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, Town of Selma Town Council Meeting Number Two. Six P M. Here in the Jernigan Building. We've got a decent-looking agenda before us, but of course, before we jump into it, we are going to have an invocation. I believe Councilman Overby is going to honor us with an invocation for this evening. If everyone would please stand. Council, whenever you are ready.
Our Father, Lord, we just thank you for today, Lord. We thank you for each and everything you've given us, Father. We ask you bless us upon our citizens in Selma, Lord. We ask you to be with each and every one of them, not only in our town, but everywhere else as well, Lord. Lord, we give you all the praise for that as well, Lord, but we ask you to be with this meeting tonight, Lord. Be in the midst of it, and we give you the praise for that as well. Thank you, Lord. In your holy name I pray. Amen.
Amen. If you will remain standing, we have a very special guest with us today. She comes from Selma. China J. Lofton. Back in this audience. Come on up. Come on up. China was in eighth grade at Selma. An active member of the National Junior Honor Society. And the I B program. She enjoys playing volleyball and watching horror movies. Yeah, not like that. China as far as to become a criminal justice lawyer. She hopes to attend early college. So that's for J C C.
Yes, sir.
That's awesome. She comes from a loving family. I believe she's got a home that's right here. You've got three siblings?
Yes.
And then dad as well?
No.
No?
My parents.
But he's a rap.
Yes, sir.
Rock and roll. And your favorite color is? Purple. Who else likes purple? Okay. Is there anything you would like to say?
I would like to thank you for all being here so watch me lead the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm very honored to be here for this special moment. Thank you.
Rock and roll. So we'll turn and face the flag, and we will take your lead wherever you're raised.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fantastic. Want to take a picture? You want a picture with the council? Get a picture with Thomas Spah. Anyone want to take a picture? All right. And that brings us to looking at an agenda. I believe we do have some adjustments to make, staff requests, so we'll start with those. So I believe we want to add Budget Amendment Number Five to Consent. So that'll make for five A, Budget Amendment Number Five. We're going to remove the budget calendar item nine E for right now. We've got two resolutions to add for eleven A and eleven B related to seeking fundee for N C D O T safety projects. And then we're going to look at an adjustment to the two thousand twenty-five meeting schedule as part of eleven C. So I'll take care of those portions. Was there anything else staff-side that needed to be adjusted? Counsel, is there anything that we would like to add or subtract?
Yeah, I'd like to discuss in the sports feed. Can we move that to January?
And if you'd like, do you want to make sure we list that, to make that note as part of your report and recommendations? So we'll put that in there as part of ten A for Councilman Overby. Okay? Sound good? Do you have anything else that we want to make adjustments to, Counsel?
I do want to clarify. I think Councilman Overby wants to move the entire discussion to January and not tonight, correct?
That's correct.
Not tonight. It needs to be scheduled for January. Absolutely. So we'll make sure that's part of that board recommendation. Fantastic. All right, with that, do I have a motion to approve the agenda with those amendments?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We have ourselves an agenda, and on consent, we just have Budget Amendment Number Five, a fairly light one. I believe that's related to some public works facilities adjustments. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Stocking.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and that brings us into open forum citizens' request. We did have three folks that reached out to Dalton, I believe, earlier in the week, or maybe a couple of weeks ago. I don't actually see any of these folks in the room, but just in case. Jennifer Tolton, are you in the room? Kenneth Barfield, are you in the room? Laura Benton, are you in the room? Seeing none of those folks. And I've got Ms. Noreen Wall on here, but I believe you'll be speaking as part of Sylvia. Okay, well, I've got Ms. Wall on here. I believe you'll be speaking as part of the conversation related to a zoning amendment, correct? Okay, very good. Got some time, moment. Anybody else want to speak as part of open forum citizens' request? Raise your hand and come on up to the mic, name and address for the record if you'd like. Twice. We are moving right along. Oh, exciting discussions and presentations. Who is taking away this conversation about our fire department I S O?
I'm self and Chief Bar is going to tag team this a little bit. Very proud to come to you tonight to do some exciting news. This is the third inspection had since I've been here in Selma. And good news again, we win again. About three years ago, the mayor came to me and was talking about I S O score. And being the fire chief of Bullhead, I said, you know it don't matter, right? It does not matter. He does not put fires out. But it does matter. And he made me understand that when he called it a trophy. Trophy for the town of how good we are and how we're supported. So that's what I'm here to bring you tonight. We're very proud to announce that following that following our I S O suspension, March eighteen, two thousand twenty-five, we have reduced our public protection classification, or what usually is called I S O score, from a three to a two. Again, this is the third time we have dropped the rate in eighteen years. So I want to say a few words at the end, and I'm going to turn it over to Brandon to tell you a little bit about the score, but Chief Barby, the Assistant Chief Barby will come up here in just a minute, and he is, I can't take any credit for this. We set a good department together. The men of this department have worked their butt off to get it, get to this point. And you can get all the good things you need to do. You can do everything exactly like they want, but if you don't put it together in order and in an easy-to-read fashion, them inspectors are going to get it wrong, because that has happened in a lot of different places. He has nailed this thing. So I'm proud to introduce him to you. He's going to talk to you a little bit about what we did right, and I'm going to talk to you about how we can improve.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Counsel. So as Chief was talking about how we improved, our last grade was in two thousand twenty, and so they came back normally, it's every five years. And there's big, there's four key components that they look at. Communications, Fire Department Operations and Equipment, Water Supply, and Community Risk Reduction. The biggest one that we have control over is Fire Department Operations and Equipment, as far as firefighters and the Fire Department itself. Obviously, that is backed by the support of the council and the town. And in that, we saw probably the biggest improvement this year. We scored forty-seven out of a possible fifty points in that category, which is just unprecedented. The biggest attribute is the time and effort that the guys put in, mainly in training. Each firefighter averaged around two hundred and five hours of training. That ain't just at the firehouse, that ain't just at classes, but that's going to J C C, to North Side Facilities, Princeton Fire Department's facility, and so forth. And they're asked to get eighteen hours a year at these facilities outside of Selma, and we were about perfect on that. So that's just exceptional. The next is personnel. With your support and increased staffing, that now allows our engine companies to respond with four people on the fire engine, and that is improving our grade greatly on the response mechanism portion of that. So that was a vast improvement from the last grade. Also, the replacement of our ladder truck improved our score for our ladder credit. So that was a big, big uptick in credit points on that end, and we appreciate the support on that as well for helping us achieve that. Our community risk reduction score, which looks at fire inspections, fire investigation, and then our fire prevention side, that saw an increase because our fire prevention has been astronomically through the roof, and they've been knocking it out the park. And then also the collaboration with Johnson County Emergency Services for assisting us with our fire investigations and our fire inspections now. We're able to credit their training hours as part of ours on that end and max that that out as well. Our water supply, we saw a small improvement in our water supply this year, mainly for the modeling. The modeling was a big factor in improving that score. Two to three points is a big deal in water, and that's what we got. So that was a big deal on that end. And so again, thank you very much for all your help, your support, and we hope that continues, and we know it will. So thank you again.
Thank you.
I'm always asked, what can we do better? Well, you got one more point to go. And again, what Brandon said, our biggest need is the water system, but I got some good news without bad news. We only went at one point. We have not done a lot better job on our water supply. But we have funded, y'all have funded for grant programs, a path to get there. One of the biggest things we get, we still got a lot of four-inch, two-inch lines in this town. There is a plan, a funded plan in place to replace every single one of those lines with six-inch line. That's going to the big loop that y'all are probably tired of me talking about through Eastfield, that will will make a huge difference in any low-flow situations we have. So I expect the next fire chief will have to worry about how close he is to a one, or she, how close they are to a one. So there's just very few ones in the state, and I'm proud to say we are no one is better than this in Johnston County on a class. There are a few other twos, but nobody's a one. So we are with the top. So staffing concerns, we are lucky that that group of men right there love this town enough to come back when it's off day, when they get a big fire, and that really made a difference. A four-man engine company is wonderful, but we need sixteen to seventeen on every fire we get. We wouldn't make it without these guys jumping out the bed, just like we did when they were volunteers. So ongoing recruitment, staffing increases, and strategic placement of stations and locations will be important. Again, I want to thank the achievements reflects the dedication, teamwork of the Selma firefighters, the town council, administration, mutual aid departments, Johnson County Emergency Services, county commissioners, all working as a team to make this happen. And I just, I just can't say enough about what these men do day to day. Our reputation is growing. I think I got sixteen firefighter applications right now. Never had anything like that. So I just want to say that eighteen years ago, when y'all asked me to come work here, I had several small tactics to get done, but the one thing that I was told by the much bigger man sitting in that seat, Charles Hester, I don't mean bigger man, I just mean monstrous man. Make me a world-class fire department, and there he said it. Thank you.
We've got Commissioner Ted Godwin in the building. It's something to add to that conversation.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Ted Godwin, three ninety-five Hawkins Road, Selma. When Chief got up here and started to say this rating, I wasn't sure what he was going to say, but when he said a two, it sort of surprised me. Because to put it in perspective, this is sixteen hundred on the S A T. Oh, when another small fire department achieved a two a couple of years ago, it was such big news that the insurance commissioner came down here and presented it. So congratulations to the whole department. That's outstanding. There's nobody in the county with any better rating than that. Congratulations.
Chief mentions the conversation about getting to the one, and I am proud to say we are well ahead of the game, unheaded in that direction, and we have to give credit to Representative Larry Strickland, Senator Benton Salre, because the funding that they have provided the Town of Selma to help make those adjustments to our water and sewer operations are going to take that conversation further quickly. We have a plan in place already to handle those needs related to those lines and getting water pressures to where they need to be to make sure we are numero uno in the Town of Selma. Counsel, any other comments?
I just think it's also important to note that the achievement helps our citizens by lowering insurance rates because the risk is reduced. So not only is it a trophy, it's also a risk reduction and more money in your pocket.
So when you are shopping for insurance rates, bear in mind, need to mention, remember, Town of Selma's rating is two. January one. Thank you for that, Neff. On January one. Don't jump the gun in December. January one. Hey, we figure we'd want to very much commemorate this amazing achievement. So we got a little something for our fire department to hang up on the wall like a trophy. Why don't y'all come on up? Let's get, let's get some pictures. Let's get some pictures. Counsel, come on up. Come on up. This is, this is, this is your hard work. Your hard work. Fantastic news in terms. All right, that brings us into public hearings and appeals. I believe we are opening up a recess here. So do I have a motion to open the recess public hearing related to two zero two five zero one eight R C map amendment for seventeen forty-nine Outlet Center Drive?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We are back in public here.
Yes, so just to jump right back in, there are going to be some edits to the staff report for the updated plans and recommendation. You were given the updated presentation form that has the utility plan that we were working on with the applicant. Just a reminder that this is the property address at seventeen forty-nine Outlet Center Drive, which the property owner, Sylvia and Loretta Wall, who are here today as well. This is a town council request for conditional zoning district from I B to a planned unit development residential P U D R, which uses, which uses and standards that comply with a transitional residential T R zone. So with that in mind, staff find that the conditional zoning application is consistent with the U D O and land use plan. After the T R C review, it was determined that the project is feasible with both of the two explored water options for water supply. Staff recommend the proposal to council. We will have the applicant and also Chief Philip here. Chief McDaniel could explain the water options better than I can for water and sewer, but I ask council to consider the following motions. Motion to accept all testimony and evidence into record and a motion to approve or deny. So I ask that my staff report and supporting document be entered into evidence as testimony.
So yes, let's talk about this water supply plan after you.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Again, I'm Ashley Honeycutt Tarazas with Parker Poe, three one Fayetteville Street, back with this applicant team on the rezoning request for a beautiful and affordable multifamily project just across I ninety-five from the coming businesses in Eastfield Crossing. Alex from T W G Development is here as well, and we also have Dan Deisert from Gateway Engineers, the same engineering design firm that helped design Eastfield and who's been working on this water plan with the town and also with your consulting engineer, Withers Rabinell. So I discussed the the plan unit development request in detail last time, and we can revisit any details of that if there are questions. But tonight, again, we're going to focus on the water supply questions that you asked last month when the case was tabled and the additional information and work that we've done on that since the meeting. So again, just as a reminder, the P U D land use plan proposes five three-story apartment buildings, central clubhouse and green space amenity, playgrounds, preservation of open space at the back of the site, and meets the design standards in U D O for multifamily development. And again, the question that y'all asked last time was for more information about the public utilities. Again, this is a map of all the utilities in the area and how the town would be able to serve the project and its residents at this location in Outlet Sir Drive. So we've had several more follow-up conversations with Johnson County, the town staff, and the town's consulting engineer, Withers Rabinell, since the meeting last month. We've done flow tests, tests, hi, tests, multiple tests, hired Withers Rabinell to create engineering models on the town's behalf and to study the ability to provide water service at the site, and a lot of, there were a lot of technical discussions and evaluations. And through all of that additional work, our engineers, the town's engineers, and the town and county staff have determined that there are two feasible options to provide water service to this property, and each option has benefits. So and we will finalize the option that's installed during the site plan phase for the project. And we revised that preliminary utilities plan in the P U D plan to reflect those two options. And I think you all have a copy of that, but if you need larger copies, I have copies as well. So I'm actually going to let Dan from Gateway Engineers talk through really briefly each of those options that are in the revised utilities plan.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. My name is Dan Deisert. I'm with Gateway Engineers right up here up the street. I'm a registered engineer in North Carolina. I'm here tonight to discuss with you the conceptual plans that we've come up with related to the water on the, on the project. And essentially, we're dealing with the dead-end line that didn't have adequate pressure to provide the needed service at the building. So two concepts that were explored related to the project included actually working with Johnson County to do an interconnect with their sixteen-inch line, which is shown here just past the campers RV location. We would be able to connect an eight-inch line and bring it up to that dead-end piece and be able to service the project. As a part of that particular option, we engaged fire flow tests, and we have a certification that we can provide adequate pressure for these buildings that we have on site, which incidentally will be sprinkled. The second option we had related to the water is actually to work along with the town's long-term plan related to an interconnect that would actually service the dead-end from the other direction and actually bring an eight-inch line over from Crocker Street through easements that have already been obtained. And that also is the one that we had Withers and Rabinell actually run through their model. And that model concludes also that this is the second option to provide adequate fire flow and domestic use, water use at the site. So I can answer any questions. It's very high level, but as, as Ashley said, we'll work these out with staff as we move through the land development process with the final selected urgent request.
Just as a refresher, how many units?
Hundred and seventy. Hundred fifteen, sorry. So as Dan mentioned, there's, there's different benefits to each one of these options. So this one, the Town of Selma C I P, the Capital Improvement Plan option, this, this connection is already a part of your capital improvement plan that Chief McDaniel discussed, you know, the big loop. This is a part of that loop. So it's in, it's already a part of the future water extension plans of the town. The other option, and Chief McDaniel can, can explain more about this if you have questions, but the idea would be to connect it to that Johnston County line until the loop is completed, and then it would serve as like an emergency water supply into that line later on. So again, there's two feasible options to get the needed domestic water supply and and fire flow to this site, and we would, we would work with, and again, there's benefits to both. So we would work with the, with your staff on finalizing which one we can afford with at the site plan stage.
Do we have any more information staff-side concerning how that does tie into our future plans?
Yes, sir. The again, or she's exactly right, there's benefits of both, but they're both viable, and we could work with either one. The interconnection with the county is something that was not available, and I told them that was not going to be an option with the county, and then they surprised me and said, yeah, we'd love to do that. Seven years ago, when we built Campers End, that was not an option. But their, their process has changed. They're using the same chemicals we're using now, so that is an option. When this goes away, that interconnection goes away, this, this will be a temporary fix. When our loop was finished in about two, two and a half years, they would connect to that, but we would keep that connection. So if you go back to July third, twenty-two or three, I can't remember which day it was, that would have helped us that day when we lost all pressure. And in an opposite, just a couple of weeks ago, when the county lost our, our pressure, we could help need. Um, and and in opposite, just a couple of weeks ago, when the county lost our, our pressure, we could help need. So that is a wonderful plan to help us for the future. Um, the other side is gonna get built, either by them or by us. Um, and so, both options are very viable, please.
So if I'm to understand, just what we're saying is, is if we were working on this project, having that line that we're talking about being part of our future plans funded by this project, is that something we have discussed, solidified, put on paper? Or is this just kind of plans that are in the air right now?
Yeah, so the, again, either one of these options are viable for the project. Because it's on your C I P under state law, it it could be reimbursed by the town if if there was some re- reimbursement agreement. But that, we don't, we're not bringing that before you tonight, I mean, we haven't finalized the the option yet. Um, but again, either one of them is is viable.
Any other questions, council? Do we have anybody else who'd like to speak as part of this public hearing? Anyone know? Name and address for the record?
Sylvia Enchidet Wall, twelve Cedar Drive, Smithfield, North Carolina. Mr. Mayor, esteemed council members, I reside in Smithfield. My sister, Loretta Noreen Wall, and I are co-owners of the property at seventeen forty-nine Outlet Drive in the town of Selma. I am speaking in favor of a change in zoning that will benefit the community. My ancestors have been in Selma and owned this property since the eighteen hundreds, before Selma was even incorporated. My father, Q K Wall, was born at this location. As a child, my sister and I went down a dirt road with my parents to pick scupanons from the vine and pears from the tree at this home farm. I am emotionally tied to this land and do not take any change lightly. I will read the definition of the current IB zoning as stated on the Johnston County government website. Interstate business established to provide for the orderly development of land for appropriate commercial and lodging areas that serve the needs of the traveling public on Interstate Highway ninety-five. I would like to emphasize that the current IB designation is to serve the needs of the traveling public. I suggest that our priority be to serve the needs of the people of Selma, the community. I support a zoning change to P U D dash A R A, Plan Unit Development Residential. Approval will allow multi-residential construction and will serve the community. Priority should be given to Selma's hard-working people, people that need affordable housing. We see the recent increase in real estate taxes, the many financial barriers to owning a home, a rise in the cost of living, and the rapid building in the local retail industry. Where would the workers live? Where would families live? I ask that the legacy of my family, of my ancestors, be one that serves the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak as part of the public hearing?
Mayor, I would.
Yes, sir.
I will not out of order, I'm not a citizen of Selma.
Oh, you're fantastic asset yourself, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I tell you what else is a fantastic asset of this area, the Wall family. Uh, Ms. Thelman, Mr. Q K, well, that's, that doesn't really have a bearing on this, they're wonderful people, and I loved them. But I think Ms. Sylvia makes a good point here about uh, affordable housing. I've looked at the project, I've driven by and looked at the land, and maybe me more than a lot of other people realize the impact that growth has on the infrastructure and and everything, but I think she's got a good plan and I support it. Thank you.
And just to clarify, the the definition for interstate businesses, as far as our ordinance is concerned, do closely match what Johnston County has to say as well. Um, for for the record, for our ordinances, it's established to provide for the orderly development of land for appropriate commercial and lodging areas that serve the needs of the traveling public on the Interstate Highway ninety-five, particularly at interchanges with major arteries leading to the town. So that's the actual Selma definition as well, uh, running congruent to the Johnston County definition.
Okay, I was just gonna uh, kinda ended on, you know, the uh, comprehensive plan. The project is uh, consistent with the comprehensive plan and um, would respectfully ask that that y'all approve the the zoning request this evening.
All right, with that, I I think where we last left up before we recessed, we did initially have a motion to deny that the change in zoning. Do we have that same motion to deny the change in zoning? Hearing none? Do we have, do you have a question?
I wanna be clear about what you said. Um, what did you say it was coming whether or not we did it?
So.
Or the.
Yes, ma'am, this, the second portion she showed up showing the loop, and I don't know if you can tell, that was around Rick's Road seventy and Allison already come together. If you saw that line, um, well, we already have planned to go, that's the beginning of it, come come from eight inch from Crocker Street straight through, and then it'll kind of cut over just slightly, slanting come K F C, we've already purchased that easement. Come right down that driveway and then move back into Outlet Center. Then we would increase the size of that pipe all the way down, eventually come under I ninety-five. So what they were, that part was them building that first section down to their their area. Um, like she said, they engaged our engineers and ran a model that said, this is what that'll produce if you do that. So we got those numbers for sure. So that's what, that's a viable option, and the second one will be the interconnection.
And forgive me for pointing water, I got ahead of myself. Uh, do we have anybody else who wants to speak as part of the hearing? With that, do I have a motion to close the public hearing related to the zoning change request?
So. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Um.
Aye, and then now, we'll circle back. Uh, we did have a motion to deny that was uh, given at last hearing. Do we have that motion? All right, do we have a motion to approve, but with that, are there conditions that would be required with this? Absolutely.
Um, so one of the things you may want to consider is approving it with conditions that the the water plan is um, discussed and approved by the town of Selma during the site plan process. Um, so just making sure if that's something that you guys want to condition is ensuring that, you know, whichever water plan is best for the town is something that will will be um, conditioned on this approval.
Okay, and with that, just to make sure that we're clear with the water plan, sewer plan, we had no concerns there whatsoever.
Sewer is in place that that would serve that.
Electric?
They're in that area, uh, I I I'll say this professionally, I guess, uh, if they're in the area, they they can choose. But they have expressed to me, so. You can make that a condition that they really aren't agreeing to, it's all fair.
So with the closed public hearing, um. Hey, I skipped it the first time, I understand. Yeah, we we definitely cannot, yeah, it's it's always customer choice. But we we do need to carefully consider, would we like to condition water uh, infrastructure in this uh, conversation? Counsel?
Well, to me, we're looking at, you know, a choice here, a choice there, it's affordable housing and.
So uh, essentially, it would be upon the approval of a site plan for the development. Is that what I'm understanding?
It's very wrong.
I I would maybe specify language regarding a viable water option approved by town, by town itself, um, as a part of their site.
Okay, viable water option approved by the town is part of the site plan.
And the only thing that you did not consider as condition is annexation.
I just thought about that too.
I was just gonna say, so the property is in your extraterritorial jurisdiction, which means that you have zoning authority, so you can change the zoning, but we're gonna file an annexation petition. Um, like, we can't, we have to have public utilities from the town and we can't get them without annexation, so that'll come back.
We would stipulate annexation.
Yeah, yeah, we can't, we can't get public utilities without annexing into the town, so.
So.
That's coming.
This would be approval upon a viable water option approved by the town with the site plan and upon annexation. Anything else? So let me pause that up real quick. Do I have a motion to approve the zoning map amendment for seventeen forty-nine Outlets Center Drive uh, with the condition of a viable uh, water uh, water.
Bible water supply.
Thank you. War- Bible water supply plan approved with the site plan by staff and upon annexation.
So moved.
So.
Any discussion further? So we did have concerns previously about uh, the amount of uh, people coming into that area. The amount of traffic that that will increase, of course, that'll be a N C D O T conversation as the project goes forward. We have seen N C D O T stipulate adjustments to the road as well. So that would cover all those concerns, were there any other concerns that need to be addressed from our last conversation?
Um, just the um, the economic factors with it being a of affordable housing and what we could be possibly dealing with down the road.
So bear in mind, the the uh, rental rates are um, set in place by HUD, and that involves three separate counties. Rental rates between, is it Wake, Johnston, and is it Franklin? Wake, Johnston, Franklin, if I remember correctly. So that uh, I believe that would have put the income for a single individual around fifty-seven?
Fifty-seven, yes.
Is that correct? If my memory's not bad. Um, so that that covered that question. Uh, was there anything else as far as uh, we did have a concern about our ability uh, with a police force to patrol the area? Uh, is there a clubhouse as part of this development?
Yes.
Clubhouse is part of the development, any onsite security at all?
They have security cameras all around outside, light shining outside, but we don't have some.
Gotcha, so there's a security system in place, cameras in place uh, to help with uh, any type of possible police action. Any other questions from the previous uh, piece of this hearing that we haven't addressed? Anybody can think of? Just wanna make sure we have all of this for the record. We're good to go? We have a motion and a second on the table. Got all the discussion out the way. All those in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Aye.
Motion fails. Do we need more information related to the project? And I understand the concerns, I do. Um, this is a lot of people in a place that already has a lot of people. This is a area that already we seen stretched thin, and we have another uh, apartment development already underway, pretty much across ninety-five, correct? Those are where the concerns lie, I believe. But we're not yet prepared to deny. Is is that what I'm to understand? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sorry, I was just gonna, just I can pull my slides back up real quick. Thank you. Yeah, I mean, we're happy to to answer any questions, so this is a, it is a residential project, but today, like, something like a hotel, which actually generates more traffic than multifamily would be permitted on the property, and like the property owner said, we wanna use it for something, for the people of Selma as a use that um, benefits the community housing the people can afford as the housing rises. There's, this is an excerpt from your comprehensive plan that was approved just a few years ago, and this is, you know, all that in pink is exactly the type of growth that you're trying to encourage in this area around ninety-five. Um, you know, housing for the people that are gonna work at Eastfield. Um, it calls in in the comprehensive plan, I, you know, I read it, um, talks about the rising um, housing costs, especially in rental housing, how so much uh, a bigger portion of of people's incomes has to be used um, towards just having a roof over their heads. And so we're trying to, you know, build a beautiful project that's gonna be housing that people that work in the community, so they can live in the community instead of a hotel, um, you know, for people passing through, and that actually generates more traffic um, than than, you know, apartments where people live. Um, and, you know, I put some of that up there on the screen, but again, this is, this is an area, um, again, compl- like, dense, higher density of multifamily uses are contemplated here um, to complement and support the commercial uses, that the commercial uses need. Um, housing, one, for customers, but also for um, for their workers. And so, you know, we we ask that you you consider this, we've we've spent a lot of time and and put a lot of thought into the design to make it look beautiful, be a place where people wanna live in Selma. Um, and to, and to really, um, we worked really hard with the, with your town staff, um, wanted to come up with a plan um, that would be a a compliment to the town and would work um, at this location next to the to the highway, great access um, for people to get to those commercial uses. Um, but also to make sure that that the town could could serve it at this location, it's a developed part of the town.
Let me pause you right there.
Yes, sir.
Um, and the mention to IB, so right now, the property is zoned IB, just to make sure we're clear on on what the conversation is. So right now, a hotel could be built on that property today. That is part of our IB zoning, so I believe there's uh, already La Quinta and a.
I think there's three or four hotels right there.
There's two, okay.
Quadi, and there's a La Quinta and a Quadi in there currently. So there could be a third hotel there today if somebody wanted to build a hotel on that property. So that that is something to bear in mind as well. With that being said, with this somewhat of an impasse right now, do we require a motion to deny at this point in time?
So is there any additional information that you guys are looking for, or um, you're at a point where you've concluded that there's no additional facts that you're looking to consider?
Well, I I must admit, I'm still kind of spinning in the thought about a hundred and seventeen more units in a space of that size. Um, we already have decided another apartment complex that has about a hundred or so units, if not more, beside it. My my concern is, quite frankly, the.
Yeah, there's eighty-eight at Retreat at Selma.
Thank you very much. So my concern is is the the amount of density we're creating there. P D, has P D had a chance to look over this carefully?
They're aware, but not not a site planer.
So do we have the ability to possibly table for the time being with the public hearing closed, uh, pending uh, uh, motion deny or approve still?
Did you want to reopen the public hearing to hear from P D?
I mean, I I would love for us to have all the information in the world before we go one way or another, because again, we clearly aren't prepared to deny it, because it does sound like a a decent project, but at the same time, this is something that will affect our current residents significantly. So we do wanna make sure we cross our Ts and D's on every bit of this conversation. So with that being said, we have the option to reopen the public hearing related to it?
So you just closed it, you could reopen the public hearing and then go ahead. So you just closed it. You could reopen the public hearing and then go ahead and set the new date that you wanna, you know, continue it. Let's say if, yeah, I mean, if you have PD come in and discuss it, um, otherwise if it's just contemplation, um, at this point you would wanna either deny it or approve it.
So, and here's the information that I'm specifically, if there's any other information, please chime in. Um, I am interested to understand the amount of calls that we were experiencing currently at retreat, the amount of calls that we're experiencing at the hotels there. And then in that general area all total, uh, maybe also get a general idea of the amount of calls that we're experiencing. If there's any other similar apartment complex, uh, in the area, because again, we're also talking about a three-hundred unit apartment complex that is currently being built across the street.
That's right. If I may, and I know, I know why Alex is, is getting up here, um, if we wanna take a recess to talk about some of these items, I think that's fine, but there is. So, um, there's tax credits that he's pursuing to be able to fund the project and there, there are certain deadlines that are coming up. Um, so, you know, we do need, um.
Could we circle back to this? It's November twelfth right now.
Do you have another meeting? I mean, it, it has to be.
Call a special meeting.
Special meeting.
To, to, to discuss this. Yeah, um, because again, you know, remembering the conversation from last, uh, meeting and even seeing some of the concerns in the audience today. We're, we're talking about something that will definitely affect our current residents, no matter how you say it. So, um, we can get the call conversation a week.
And we can have additional conversations with you all. This is legislative rezoning. Uh, we have staff recommending approval and your planning board unanimously recommended approval of this. Um, because it is consistent with your comprehensive plan, which is something that, that, you know, town is supposed to consider when you're, when you're considering a rezoning request, as I'm sure, I'm sure y'all know and appreciate. Um, which is, you know, why we wanna cite where, you know, you all say, hey, we want denser development here. So we said, okay, this is, um, what's called for on your plan. And so this is the type of zoning that we're gonna bring to you. And I know that it is the first HUD, um, in the town. I do get that and it's been a, a little bit of a different experience for us because it is, is the first HUD. Um, but, you know, we're, we're open to conversation. If we could do, like I said, a recer- a recess and have some of that conversation, we, to come back, um, and reopen it after the recess, that would be, um, great too.
In fact, it is, it's more of a direct question. Call volume related to the hotels, particularly in that area versus the apartment complex. So we're talking about apartment complex with eighty-eight units. We're talking about hotels and maybe get some numbers on the amount of units there. And, and really get an idea of what the call volume is related to those hotels versus those apartment complexes. Because at the end of the day, that should be in pretty simple apples that comparison, particularly in that location with it all being there, for us to understand what type of strain that puts on our safety. So is that, uh, something we can sort through in a week or so?
Yes.
Counsel, are we okay with that or do we wanna go ahead and get some other reading while we're here?
Any decompers?
Are we okay with that?
I'm okay with going ahead, but.
Yeah, well, we've got the, 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 the motion to, to approve sorted through for now. So let's, uh, anticipate doing that a date. Let's go ahead and get a date. So we don't leave anybody hanging. November twentieth. What do we have going on? We've got a board of adjustment. Is that correct?
Is that Thursday?
That is Thursday. Uh, Wednesday, the nineteenth?
I won't be able to do that.
Uh, nineteen?
Do a five P M instead of six P M?
On Thursday? We already be here and ready to go, wouldn't we?
It'll be a one, one day stayover for staff.
Sounds like a good plan to me. Can we do the twentieth at five o'clock?
I can't.
You cannot.
I cannot.
I don't have my calendar.
Friday, the twenty-first?
I could.
Everybody can do Friday, the twenty-first?
But if something were to happen, could we call in?
I'd wanna be in the room for it, but, right, what would you say? Well, let's tend to be safe Friday, the twenty-first. But bear in mind, a remote member would not be actually just, just be listening. During the day work better for you?
I mean, yeah, I, I could make it work, um, during the day on the, the twenty-first, um, on Friday. Alex is fine.
Is there anywhere you can zoom in on, got another project?
Oh, absolutely. We can do that, actually.
Yes, sir.
Um, what time would work best for you?
We're talking about Friday, the twenty-first.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Uh, let's do. Does one work for everybody? Let's do one. So Friday, November twenty-first at one P M, we'll reconvene in this room for a special call meeting to sort through the rest of the information. And we'll have information ready related to our, our police calls at the, uh, hotels and apartments in that location. Good. For the record, absolutely. Anything else? Good to go? All right, that's what we will do. Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, moving along. Fee schedule, renewable credit rider. Oh, I'm sorry, I did scoop over nine A. I apologize. Ordnance text amendment, chapter thirteen offenses and miscellaneous provisions. Who's taking that away?
I will take that, Mayor.
Yes, yes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we have had some deep discussions about code enforcement over the last few months. I put an internal policy before you last month, and this is to clarify some of the administrative fees imposed in the text amendment portion of items. And so in the text amendments, you will see that we did make it clear that that will be administrative fee attached to abatement as well as providing the ability for waiver. If there is a violation that occurs and then compliance happens, um, the ability for a one-time waiver before having to go to board of adjustment.
Excuse me.
Very good. So with that, the, the only thing that I saw related to all of this, uh, code enforcement conversation was the need. Personally, I feel that we need to, for our basic code enforcement violations, keep that a hundred and fifty dollar administrative. Uh, I do understand removing it from the trash conversation, um, when it comes to lid being open, consider recycling can being laying around. But for some of these, uh, more mundane junk cars, uh, stuff piled in the yard, anything outside of sanitation as far as code enforcement, I do believe we need to keep that one hundred and fifty dollar administrative fee. A, because of the amount of time it takes and the amount of money it takes to have somebody that we actually pay to make sure people are doing what they're supposed to do. And, and B, because we don't want people to get used to just tossing out fifty dollars here, a hundred dollars there and still doing the same thing that they've been doing forever.
Yes, sir. So that would be addressed in nine C when we get to the fee schedule. Um, the text amendment actually adds an end to make it clear that administrative fee will be applied. So, um, this is just making it clear that that administrative fee can't be applied with abatement as it wasn't listed before, but it doesn't remove any text from that.
And this does give, uh, is this the piece where we have a little more discretion for waivers of, uh, one time, hey, I didn't know what was going on? And that discretion's given to you?
Yes, sir.
So when someone calls us, we should say, you need to talk to Alexis.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that's a great idea. And this also is, um, kinda saying that the first time you get a warning with an explanation, second time a chance to remove, but the fine is forgiven. The third time, you're getting fined.
Yes, ma'am.
Now with that, we are cleaning the slate for what we've already processed, are we?
No, sir. Uh, this would be going forward, nothing retroactively, but this would be a change going forward for any future violations.
Well, what I'm saying is if we've got folks that have already gotten a good stack of violations, they don't get that one too.
Yeah.
We got a lot of folks that like to test the board these days.
And you're keeping a spreadsheet to speak of who you're forgiving and that kind of thing?
Yes.
Do you have any other questions? You have a motion to, uh, approve this ordinance text amendment to chapter thirteen offenses and miscellaneous provisions?
So moved.
So.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Got ourselves an amendment. Now we're looking at the F Y twenty-five, twenty-six fee schedule updates, renewable credit rider. What do we got going on?
This would be me again, Mayor. This is relating to our solar panel policy that has been in place, um, for a little while now. Um, I believe it's been in place for about a year or so. What I have done is gone in and added a yearly credit section as well as a clarifying statement about how long the application would remain on file, which is up to three years. The reason doing so is that this actually does not comply with our software, our finance software. And so there's no way to go in and have this automatically compute these tempers. So what would happen with the yearly credit is kind of a true-up of anybody who has a certain amount taken out of their bill. And there's a true-up at the end of their bill. That would happen with the solar credit as well. You would have a true-up at the end of your bill. And whether that's a extremely low bill or a check cut, that's how that would happen with the solar credit. Um, and we have had electric cities create us a formula and a spreadsheet to input, input the data and then it gives us that figure.
Is there anybody that's actually receiving a type of solar credit currently?
No, we have a list of applicants who have been, we've received their application and then upon approval of this, we'll be able to implement moving forward.
Yeah, I can see the topic.
I believe we have twelve.
So this realistically. Credit to the folks with solar panels, a little bit of extra workload on the staff.
A little bit, um, but that electricity is just very gracious in giving us that. If we just put in the information and it shoots us out of number, so we're able to work with it that way. The three-year turnaround is the ability for us to say, hey, we've given you this credit, you can reapply after three years, but it also limits us limited because we don't wanna have a hundred people on the solar panel list at a time. So it gives council the opportunity to limit that at the guns.
Limit the number of people that are receiving that credit.
So the, uh, solar panels is put on where, where the solar panels gonna be?
They're on their homes.
On their homes. So in three years, you don't renew and you've just got this just there for no reason at all?
No, you're still receiving your personal benefit. This is an additional credit that the town gives you on top of the benefit that you're already receiving from using renewable less energy.
So with the solar panel, you've got lots of options on how you utilize it. You could connect it to a battery, keep that energy for yourself and use for things that are not connected to the grid, all types of options. But this is, uh, a town being gracious to say, hey, we'll take your energy from your solar panel and give you a credit. Staff side, as far as the workload is concerned, are there any concerns at this point?
Not with the way it is written now. Prior to, yes, it was an ongoing, never-ending credit that had no way to be computed. Now with an actual way to compute and an end date and start date, it gives more clarity to the administrative side of things.
And for clarity, we would at some point possibly have to be prepared to cut off the town completely and say no more?
Absolutely.
Have a motion to adopt this F Y twenty-five, uh, F Y twenty-six fee schedule update for the renewable credit rider.
So moved.
So.
Any discussion others? All those in favor?
Aye. Nay.
One nay? Hey, hey, I, I understand, counsel. Uh, let's see. Fee updates, uh, fee schedule updates, F Y twenty-five, twenty-six facilities repayment rider. Who's got that?
Mr. Ship? Yes, sir. Evening, Mayor, counsel. Uh, what we have before you tonight is a facilities repayment rider. Uh, this would be in addition to the fee schedule, uh, to allow developers and business owners, uh, for new facilities. Uh, most commonly their transformer costs to be, uh, financed over time over their utility bill by adding payment installments to the electric portion of their bill. Uh, this would have an interest of three percent and would not exceed ten years.
Wow. Pretty straightforward.
Electric cities help with this one as well.
We keep them around for a reason.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Any questions otherwise? Do I have a motion to, uh, adopt the F Y twenty-five, twenty-six fee schedule update for facilities repayment right?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Very cool. Thank you. Fee schedule updates for code enforcement.
Now we're at your code enforcement versus sanitation, Mayor.
Yeah.
I think we kinda mentioned some changes that were mentioned by Mayor about administrative fee remaining with the code enforcement versus the sanitation fines, which makes sense. When we're talking about code enforcement, we're talking about junk vehicles, um, dilapidated homes, things of, of much bigger nature than the sanitation fi- fines, which would be removing the administration fee unless abatement had to occur. So before you have a fee schedule, with that change, you would be keeping the administrative fee column under the code enforcement section with the suggested changes in front of you.
So I do still suggest keeping that code enforcement piece with the next year. Sanitation, of course, with that, you'd get your twenty-five dollar fine if you got stung three times for having your trash can too full. We're gonna give you another trash can. That adds twenty-five dollars to your monthly bill anyway. Two trash cans, once you add a trash can, you get another twenty-five dollars. If you don't know how to use your recycling can three times, we will just take your recycling can. We've got a lot of folks that are serious about recycling first and foremost, and we can't do it properly as a town if people are using their recycling can. We got a lot of people that are serious about keeping our community clean. If we don't know how to close our trash can, if we don't know how to put trash in the trash can, we're not headed in the direction we need to. Counsel?
So you, you made a statement that is, uh, removing cars and stuff?
So there's two sections. You will see that the top is code, just regular code enforcement. The bottom is sanitation fines. So the regular code enforcement is chapter twelve nuisance vehicles, chapter thirteen, um, which is junk storage, public obstruction of property, unsightly nuisances, those type of violations versus sanitation fines or the trash cans and the trash.
Right. So how much do we, uh, actually have to spend on having a car removed?
We haven't been able to, um, do those type of violations yet, um, but I'll tell you, it is more than just going and taking the car. We have to go through a legal process. When you're talking about removing personal or going onto private property in that manner. And so it's the legal fees that you have to attach to it that, for consideration.
But in your recommendation, what you're saying is if they're a junk car, their first offense, you charge them fifty dollars and you send them a letter that says you gotta make a. And then if you have to push them again, then you charge the one fifty. That would be the abatement? Is that how I'm reading that?
So with keeping the administrative fee, it would be anytime they got a violation, they would get that administrative fee for a code enforcement violation portion. If they did have abatement occur, they would also get an administrative fee as well, but the administrative fee would attach no matter what with regular code violations with, with keeping that. But the administrative fee would attach no matter what with regular code violations with keeping that column.
So bear in mind what we've run into in the past, when we have asked, why is this problem still a problem? Why haven't we done anything yet? Why haven't we taken it legally yet? Generally, the amounts of fines are so small, and it takes so long to prove, it would not even be worth it for us to take it to be. Because when you're talking about three hundred, four hundred bucks over the course of a year, and you send a chip, and chip is like, well, it's five thousand dollars for me to glance at this. Then we are certainly losing money attempting to clean the park down. As the fines increase exponentially quickly, we have found already that we get folks' attention, and they go ahead and clean it up, and then they decide not to do it again. So we have gotten, we have seen some significant progress in a short period of time because we have no longer played games with code enforcement. I think charging somebody fifty bucks, seventy-five bucks, two hundred bucks over the course of months is games. It's not hard to write that check if you want to leave your junk car in your front yard. But as those fines start tacking up very quickly, we have seen real dividends from really putting teeth behind code enforcement. Now, sanitation, again, I understand we've already got a remedy that's in place, that a hundred and fifty is probably a little much. But with code enforcement, uh, I would suggest we keep that.
So how much, how many times would you contact somebody about a junk car? Are you saying like you contact them one time, and that's a letter and fifty bucks? And if they don't move it, then you move it to legal? How does that work?
The abatement process is case-by-case scenario. Um, it depends on how much they run up and how much it would cost to pursue that specific action. So I can't say a blanket statement of at what point we would pursue, because what I would pursue on a shed in front of a home versus a junk vehicle versus a dilapidated home are three different plans of abatement. But it is a case-by-case basis, and it depends on the amount of fines versus the cost to go.
Go after it. So what, what was your reasoning for wanting to not do the one fifty?
That was just to make it blanket, consistent across all code enforcement, but knowing the depth that it does take to do a abatement on a code enforcement violation versus a sanitation violation, keeping it isn't aligned with what staff recommend.
Okay. I'm just, I'm trying to follow your lead because we hired you to be our town manager, so. If you're good with it, we'll leave it. Okay.
The, um, abatement of bulk items, are we still pursuing the flag notification system?
Yes, and that will be the more internal process, but it allows our citizens to have a little bit of time to get it in compliance versus before abatement would occur, which is the goal.
Do you have any other questions, Council? So with that, do, do we have a motion to adopt this F Y twenty five, F Y twenty six fee schedule related to code enforcement with keeping the a hundred and fifty dollar administrative fee related to code enforcement outside of sanitation?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion others? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One day? Councilman O'Beal? All right. We got ourselves a code enforcement fee schedule. That brings us into Councilman O'Beal's important recommendation. And Councilman O'Beal, we did have a discussion about sports, uh, fees, sports conversation that you wanted to mention.
Yeah, so I, I'm asked to request it to be moved to January so we can get a little more time to look at it. So we, we just got the paperwork today laid on the desk, and I didn't have time to go through it a lot like I'm going to go through it soon. But December being full like it is, I'd rather force this go to January.
Yeah, now is that meeting one you prefer or meeting two?
Meeting one, fine.
Meeting one in January. Got that note? So we can do this, rocking with it. Anything else, Council?
I'm good.
Council?
Good evening. Uh, as usual, I do appreciate everybody being in here, and I hope everybody has a good weekend. Thanks.
Councilman Watts?
Thank you all for coming.
Mayor Pro Tim Scarborough?
Oh, like I said, thanks, sir, Bob, for coming out tonight. I guess there's a show like set the record, on the record, so I'm gonna put some things on the record tonight while we're here. I've got some that's left, but maybe people online are kind of missing. And first, starting off was, uh, I said to my fellow council members, I asked back before, who was your who and part is your part? And the main thing about it is that I don't care how many the parts come up, the who should always be seven. So we got to make sure we keep the main thing, the main thing. Next, to address the couple messages that was a little in open form on things that we should be doing by a messenger that had the opportunity and the chance for years to do what was being asked of us, but evidently the messenger was unwilling to do the work. Well, we are doing the work, and we have the receipts for it. Then I told a story about a pig don't know pig's thing. I used the analogy to confront all the misinformation being placed on social media, Facebook billboards by a group of citizens. What was amazing about my statement about pigs don't know pig's thing, I noticed that a citizen was wearing a shirt with a picture of a pig all over here. And on top of that, another citizen was wearing a T-shirt with the caption, I love my pig. But the most amazing thing that was that Selma Halloween spectacular were held on Halloween night, and coming down Rafe Street that night was a couple dressed up in their Halloween costume with this little pig. I was told there was the animal pageant for Halloween at the south end of, on Rafe Street. Maybe my comment inspired them to participate. Next, I told the people running around town with misinformation about racial spending, infrastructure deficiency, when there were evidence all around to, to the contrary. So I asked, who are you going to believe? Those people are your lion eyes. Tonight, I would like to say that the Boys and Girls Club have a five K run every year in Selma, and it's open to both runners and walkers. This year I participated as a walker, but a runner was a person that broke the tape and declared the winner. You know, that's amazing because of the similarity that to the town of Selma citizen voting results last Tuesday, when they decided that Selma didn't need a walker but a runner. A runner that early on saw the town that needed a downtime violation. A runner that could get self-financial standing on solid footing. A runner that set out to get the police and fire department full of staff. A runner getting involved in the groundwork for the Eastfield Crossing government. I'm going to end my comments. A story about birds, the eagle. The eagle's special due to their remarkable combination of power and physical agility, including their incredible eyesight and hunting skill, as well as their symbolic stature as representation of freedom, strength, and courage and leadership, often associated with rising above and charging across many cultures. Even the United States uses it as an emblem for, uh, as our emblem. They had the ability to soar at great heights. The eagle's unique behavior traits during storm took their advantage. They fly a very high altitude often alone. They're active during the day, they prefer to shore, uh, soar using thermal uplift, using slow powerful wingspan that allow them to cover large distance while spending less energy. They are very protective of their territory. The next bird is a scavenger, vulture, and they are well-known to feast on decay, decay and carcass. We can see them at times flying around in packs in the sky, out by wood lines on by a farm, along the roadside, or even perched in the road itself. When you see them, you can rest assured that something is dead or dying in the vicinity. That is the active brute to society they do. Let us continue to fly like an eagle and continue to build on Selma being the crossroad of tradition and innovation. Life is so much sweeter when you know who you are and whose you are. I will leave you with what my father instructed me to do during my journey up here on earth. Galatians six nine. Don't get tired of hitting others. You will be awarded when the time is right, if you don't give up. The translation is from the contemporary English version. And I will say at the end, the loving words that you read, or that I read and spoke here tonight were solely those of Joseph Scarborough, Mayor Pro Tim, Selma, North Carolina. And please excuse my English, but I do love each and every one under my voice, and there ain't nothing you can do about it. Thank you.
So we've got the list of reminders that we have for the end of the evening. We've got advisory board vacancies that we certainly would love to see filled. Certainly reach out to our clerk for details. I believe we have some ETJ openings and in-town openings. We've got the beautification awards for both in-town and ETJ residents eligible. Winners are announced every quarter. First winner will be announced November seventeen, twenty twenty five during the town summer appearance commission meeting. All winners receive a plaque, temporary yard sign, and a feature in the town's newsletter. Residential and commercial properties are eligible. Christmas decorating contest, residential and commercial properties are eligible, announced during the town of summer appearance commission meeting on Monday, December fifteenth, during their regularly scheduled meeting. Christmas tree lighting parade Tuesday, December second, twenty twenty five. Tree lighting is at six. The parade starts at seven. If you are part of the parade, lineup starts at six for the parade. And that will be followed by fireworks at the end of the parade, as some special we do in town itself. Public information handouts are available at this back table in the back corner of the room, which will be to my right, your left. And then cold weather alerts with cold weather coming and temperatures dropping. Be mindful of your animals. Make sure they are warm, sheltered properly, water connections and other valuables that may be affected during this cold winter. A few business items. I've got a couple of N C D O T resolutions of support for U S three oh one pedestrian safety project, and one for a resolution support for an East Lizzie Street, Lizzie Mill Road pedestrian safety project. To summarize these just real quick, both of them are related to funding that the N C D O T may be receiving through the federal government to do pedestrian safety projects in smaller urban and rural areas. That funding, if we, the projects that we are submitting are chosen, N C D O T will take care of the funding and the workforce. They just want to know what projects are needed. So one project is three oh one from Noble Street to where thirty-nine breaks off at the middle school. So that sidewalk gap fills and crossing, uh, signals, uh, better crosswalks up and down U S three oh one, particularly as it relates to the children going back and forth to school. A middle school and elementary school, Twenty First Century Village Community Center, Boys and Girls Club, and a library, all in the same spot, we can do better for our kids who are strolling up and down the street. And East Lizzie, Lizzie Mill Road from three oh one to Bay Leaf Drive, that has become a significant stretch for children, pedestrians as well, getting to school. And if we can get some sidewalks up and down Lizzie, that'd be a win for our community. So first, do I have a motion to adopt the resolution for support of the U S three oh one pedestrian safety project?
So move.
Second.
Second. All those in, wait, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, there, and then a resolution support for the East Lizzie Street, Lizzie Mill Road pedestrian safety project. Got motion support?
So move.
Sure.
Any discussion? So Bay Leaf Drive is pretty much the last cul-de-sac community that we have in the town itself. So that's a little bit before you get to the. Got motion second on the table, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll get those submitted and see if we can get either one of those projects on the step to get rolling. And then we mentioned the last meeting that the twenty twenty five town council meeting schedule need to be adjusted to skip meeting one in December. Uh, so I think we do need a motion to cancel meeting one for December, and we'll simply move to meeting two on December ninth. In December, do I have a motion to cancel meeting one?
Sure.
Sir.
Do that second, Mayor Pro Tim? Any discussion? Oh, let me make sure we read very clearly. So let me make sure the motion is clear. Motion to amend the twenty twenty five council meeting schedule to council town council meeting one on December fourth, twenty twenty five, and to amend the location of town council meeting two on December ninth, twenty twenty five, at six P M to be held in the Selma Civic Center at three hundred North Webb Street for the organizational meeting to be held. You guys are rocking. Oh, I love it. So we've got a, a first and a second, uh, for that amended motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, you guys are the best. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I don't have anything else. We have a closed session this evening? Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Seconding.